Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 6, 2018. It's a little after nine. Mark, there's a lot of background noise. It's a little after nine. I hereby call this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Chairman Fabro.
Present.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Hi, Chairman.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
If everyone would please stand, I would like to welcome Mary and Phil Bray from the Unitarian Congregation of Taos. She's going to share some words with us to start the meeting off in a good way. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me. We, like you, strive to make Taos County and community better. We work through our seven guiding principles. We believe in the inherent worth and dignity of every person. We believe in justice, equality, and compassion in human relationships. We believe in acceptance of one another and encouragement to spiritual growth in all of us. We believe in a free and responsible search for truth and meaning. We believe in the right of conscience and the use of the democratic process, both within our congregations and in the community at large. We believe in the goal of world community with peace, liberty, and justice for all. And we respect the interdependent web of all existence of which we are a part. Because we have our commitments out in the community, I am honored to come before the commissioners of this county, who are charged with providing just, compassionate, and intelligent leadership for our residents. May you pause to connect to your own spiritual home as you begin this work today. In quiet reflection, may you have the courage, the conscience, and the clarity of mind to provide leadership which implements the best of our human visions for this community. In peace and honor, I salute you and your willingness to serve all of us. Amen.
Thank you very much. Just guided by Mexico State Agence and Rudy Perea, would you lead us into the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, motion approved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second to approve the agenda as presented. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Present.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. Okay, next item, five, is awards and recognition. This is a community service award to the Luna family for trash pickup. This will be presented by Commissioner O'Donnell. And then we have a presentation to them of fixtures afterward. So we'll go ahead and calm down. Fixtures, if you can gather here. Mark, you can stay there where you're at.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. You never underestimate the value of being a volunteer extending a small act of kindness, for it makes a difference in communities across Taos County. That's why Ray and Catherine Luna of Chongy Sall are here today. The Taos County Commission honors them for their volunteer efforts. I first met them several years ago when they were leading an exercise class at the Chongy Sall Senior Center. You can often see them along the high road to Taos, picking up trash six to eight hours a day, once a week on average. Their dedication for the past 14 years has beautified the highway, making it cleaner for bicycle riders, tourists, and locals. However, it's not uncommon for them to clean along the highway right away and then several hours later find that someone has thrown out a recyclable container or trash right where they had just picked up. Besides their weekly trash pickup, they also offer assistance in helping heroin addicts who want to quit. They offer counsel. They guide them through how to further their education and look for a job. The Luna set the bar for volunteer service. That is why we are recognizing them today. They are a shining example of selfless service. They represent many here in Taos who do the same through dedication to making communities a better place to live. Every community should be so lucky as to have residents like the Luna's. And Chair, if you would please read the award.
This is a community service award presented to Ray and Catherine Luna in appreciation for your outstanding and selfless support in keeping the beauty of Taos County for locals and tourists by picking up thousands of pounds of trash throughout the county. Thank you for making a difference in our county. Presented this sixth day of February, signed by Commissioner O'Donnell and our manager, Yamber Cordova. Thank you very much. Our appreciation for you guys to enjoy a nice meal on us and showing that we really appreciate people like you making the duty of Taos. Thank you so much. Can we get a picture with you guys? Do you want a second?
Oh, so I have something from my department, Solway. Appreciate what you guys did for us all the time. You've been a road queen. Watch the trash bags. Thank you best for you guys. We're donated by the People, Mary, and Beautiful.
Thank you for all your efforts.
And a fair applause for you folks. You guys, thank you so much.
I also have something for Candace in appreciation for all she's done for us. I made some homemade whole wheat tortillas for you.
Mark, I'm bringing your tortillas here, Candace. Kind of perfect, dude. Everybody comes as whole.
Can you swear?
Party planner, dude. Smile, Mark. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Before we go on in the meeting here, I'd like to recognize Councilors Darian Fernandez and Fritz Han are here with us this morning. Thank you guys for coming to this side of town and hanging out with us this morning. Okay, next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. This is a time that we'd like to hear citizens have something to say about something that's on the agenda or just something that's on your mind. If you want to share some words with us, we ask that you keep it to less than five minutes. But we'd like to hear. No action can be taken on anything but possibly staff can set something up for you for a follow-up at another time. If you do come forward to talk, make sure that you state your name for the record for the clerks so they can include you in the agenda. Would anyone like to address the commission at this time? Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jean Nichols from the Pinasco area from Yama. And I just have, you know, I'll keep this really short. And I, this has to do with the hospital and incoming, you know, to ask, you know, I guess for a bailout or for more money, or I'm not exactly sure what it is because it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse since we're comfortable before the presentation. But I pulled something off the website which says, "How can I trust the money will be used responsibly?" This was about vanilla leavies. And it said, "This is going to be a very transparent process. The money will go directly to the county. The hospital will have to request the money from them and provide a report with each request." We will also post these reports on our website. The last report that was put on the website was from 3/29/16. And yet, when I looked at all the expenditures on another financial page, you know, there was many expenditures in 2017 that were both critical and committed, you know, over a million dollars. And so I'm wondering, how do we ever trust? You know, where is the transparency? And, you know, I understand that you guys have a really hard job because we're a small community and the people on the Taos Health Systems Board are all friends and colleagues. And, you know, I know there's a conflict of interest and it's really difficult to make that decision that's for all the taxpayers and all the residents when, you know, we're like a family here, you know, in the community. So I just, you know, ask you to please put the common good and the interest of everybody at heart and not just go with the easy way, which will be to renew the lease or whatever it is that's being asked of you today. I'm not sure. You know, because I think there are other issues. I've been looking at Espanola Hospital and Presbyterian seems to get all kinds of awards for fiduciary responsibility and I just wonder what we're doing here. Thank you.
And you will be staying for the presentation, I trust?
I'll stay for the presentation, but I have to be back in Pinasco at 11:30. So I can't stay too long.
We'll make sure we speed along and get you while you're way safe.
All right, thank you.
I anticipate there would be commissioners' comments about the hospital.
After the hospital.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could reconvene citizens' concerns to, after the presentation, to give the citizens that are here for that presentation. Would that be acceptable, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I apologize for being late again. Always late. Hopefully, I'm late to my own funeral. I was going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we amend the agenda to do so if it hasn't been done.
Okay.
Is there specific things that are brought up?
What we could do, I would entertain a motion to table a portion of the citizens' concern if those citizens are here regarding the hospital presentation and we would allow them the same, under the same guidelines, comments after Mr. Patton's presentation.
Great idea, Mr. Chairman. I'll set my motion to represent such.
Thank you so much for that.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to allow citizen participation following the presentation, which is item 8A. And it would be under the same guidelines of Citizens Forum as stated. That way, the people can hear the presentation and then we still will afford them the time to make comments. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Present.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. Okay. So, but you're more than welcome if you have something to say, if you have to leave or something like that. I mean, we're not limiting you to that time after the presentation. However, if you need to go somewhere and you need to say something, we're here to listen. So, anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Bill Well. I live in Royals, Mexico. I have lived there for about 38 years and Taos County for about 48. And I came to the commission this morning because I have been doing a lot of feasibility and detail study of the Abate Settlement for the last three years since we had the first public hearings. Just as a little background, I've lived in various parts of this county. I've lived in La Llama, San Cristo, Borreando, on the middle part of Rancho Tito's Road in the Rosario. I've been irrigated in all these places at this point in time. This is a very complicated issue and we have not the time or the place for this detailed discussion, but I wanted to bring some of the findings of feasibility to the commission session. In my view, this commission was my first one to present. I hope to be able to make a written presentation to the Taos County Estate Association at the next board meeting. And I'd like to copy that to this commission with your permission. Make a simple historical list of things. Two years ago, we had two public hearings after 20 years and more of gag order discussions between the various parties within the Abate Settlement. At that time, the citizens were convened in the Hilton Convention Center and the hydrologists from State Engineering Conference presented a model for discussion. They passed out a piece of paper saying anybody could file an objection given 90 days to bring their legal advice and their expert advice in front of the special master who would consider those. And if those were heard, those went to the federal judge who approved her process and that went to the National Register. And there we had it. At that point, we had the general partial decree. And now, the Bureau of Reclamation wants to move to what's called the implementation part of the settlement, which means they're requiring the parties to fill out their federal labor work, which is unimaginable, is about half an inch, and to start the process to receive the funding. And I want to just briefly cover the issues facing the TBAA, which your owners, in my view, as a part of receiving the funding, the TBAA particularly has entered the status as parties receiving money for mitigation wells have to buy land, they have to have easement to the land, they have to hire expert advice on their own initiative without getting help whatsoever from the Bureau. They have to run a very big commercial job with professional well growers and come up with some way to pay for the use of the water. There's a certain amount of money in the settlement called operation maintenance and replacement. And by my detailed study, I can prove that that money will come out in the case of our particular wells in Nora Seo in five years, at which point in time, as for the expert advice I had from Mr. Ruiz's race and the senior engineer, Mr. Richard Martinez, it would cost us $7,044 to operate that per month. And within the settlement, we were allowed four months of use. So we're looking at $28,000 a year of costs to actually receive our water. And our net net is somewhere between $600 and $1,200 a year. This will not work. And this is true of all the parties who sit in these mitigation wells. The money will run out and then we'll have something that really at the market will go down at home of breakers and have to keep. So, to make the long story short, there are lots of other details and terms of the lack of transparency about the tribe and some of the archaeological investigations granting them over 5,000 acres of apprehension rise. We've never seen any information on that. We've never seen any information on their $88 million award in terms of what they're going to do with the money and what kind of federal oversight. This is a lot of taxpayer money. I'm a taxpayer and I'm concerned. And I just want to bring this before the commission and tell you that a little bit and see if I may follow this up in some way.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. We're going to take your comments and if we have your contact information, we'll get back and we'll need to talk more about this.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address? I would like now to, came in, Mary Gamper, I'm here as well as the chief councilman, as previously mentioned. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cassandra Romano. I'm a substance abuse preventionist for Rock Mountain Youth Corps. I would like to thank you for having the moment to speak on behalf of the health and progressive healthy planning for our community. It is with a heavy heart because we are in Taos and my wonderful neighbor and friend is here to ask, is on the agenda. But I would not be doing service to my position without bringing up the issues related to approving additional liquor licenses in our community.
Susan, that would be a public hearing. So if you'd like your comments to be on the record of the public hearing at that time, I would give you the time to speak.
I would love that. Unfortunately, I'm busy. So I'm just going to give you the information. My counterpart, Corinne O'Kant, will stay for the entire presentation. I unfortunately have a commitment to fourth graders. So what I'd like to say is that we work really hard closely within the state and within the community to look at how we can positively plan for our youth, for our community, and for the health of our community. As it stands, our county is 300% over quota as what is recommended by the Alcohol Engaging Division for the liquor licenses. Studies show that high alcohol outlet density contributes and correlates to problem drinking within a community and we are ready to lead the state for high outlet density. I would like you to consider the following points before approving any additional licenses in our county, not just the one on the table today. Fourth day, the location of this distillery is within 1.2 miles of four other alcohol outlets, including two full bars. This route is traveled by an everyday school student, a school that starts at three years old. And I ask you to consider what kind of message to our youth it is sending when they will pass two bars, two beer and wine restaurants, and a distillery on their way to school, not to mention all the ski schools and families that also use this route. We strongly urge you to consider the ramifications of approving another liquor license in our county. We have a responsibility not only to our tourists and adults, but to our youth. And we must reflect on the message that high alcohol density is sending to our kids. Should you choose to approve this license, we would request that Taos Desert Spirits work with Taos Alive and Rock Mountain Youth Corps on best practices planning. Because it's not only the design and how many outlets that we have in our community, but also the way that the business is run, the way that it's designed, the science that is put out. And there are ways, really, really easy ways to practice a business that is responsible within substance abuse prevention where it's not allowing our youth to access it nor over-publicize it. You know, we don't want to push alcohol into our community. We don't want to send a message to our youth that everything you do in this town has to involve alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? All right, thank you all for being here. Some of you will hear from later and we'll move on with the agenda. Next item is item seven, approval of the January 23, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the January 23, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Present.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. All right, next item is item eight, presentation. This will be a presentation from Holy Cross Hospital CEO, Mr. Bill Patton, regarding the use of mill levy funds. And also in attendance is their CFO, Serolda Boon. Will be here in case there's any specific questions or anything financially. I'm sure he would be willing to answer as well. Mr. Patton, good morning. How are you?
Good morning. I'm doing well this morning, thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I'd like to begin first with a word of apology. It's come to my attention that the process that we have used for the last couple of years where, following the board meeting, I do a video summary of that board meeting and it's posted on our website. Steve, our CFO, does a summary of our financial situation and posts that on our website. That because we did that following our last board meeting, we got out in front of you and put you in a very uncomfortable position. That was not our intent. We are trying to keep our community up to date on the conversations, the decisions that we're making, but I now understand the position that I put you in. So especially for the ones who are running for reelection, Commissioner Fabro, Commissioner Gagos, Commissioner O'Donnell. I'd let off my personal apology. That was not my intent and I'm sorry for having done that. I'd like to begin by putting into context the financial situation that Holy Cross is currently in. And to say that we've been struggling for the last few years is probably an understatement. If you go back to fiscal year 13, we lost 5.7 million. During that year, we lost money 10 out of the 12 months. In 2014, we lost 7.2 million. That year, we lost money 11 out of 12 months. 2015, I came at the end of 2015. I came at the end of that year. We lost 1.5 million, again losing money 10 out of the 12 months. My first full year here, we actually made a million dollars. That was a fluke. We received a lump sum windfall payment from the state St. Nick Carepool Fund that went back to the 2014 year. So without that money, we would have had a breakeven year. And then this past year, and this is an audited number, we lost $202,000. We lost money 5 out of 12 months. So we have had a struggling by and why for many years. Another way to look at our financial situation is to gauge a number of key metrics against other hospitals. So one would be days counter. And the standard should be a minimum of 50 days. A healthy hospital actually will have closer to 100 days or more. But a minimum of 50, we're currently at less than 15 days. In order to come up to the standard, we'd have to have an additional 5.5 million to reach that benchmark. Average age of plant, so the age of the building and age of the major pieces of equipment should be 10 years or less. Our current standard is 18. We would need $20 million in order to meet the current benchmark. Cash flow, EBITDA would be the way that finance folks would refer to that, should be greater than 5%. We're currently at zero. In order to meet the benchmark, we would have to have a bottom line of $3 to $5 million. And the last one would be salaries as a percentage of net operating revenue. Should be 50% or less. Now, we have argued that because of the number of specialty physicians that we hire, our percentage would be a little bit higher. But the benchmark is 50%. We're currently at 56. So we're much higher. I would argue two or three points higher than what the benchmark says. The Taos News has done a good job in recent articles and editorials talking about the situation across rural healthcare, not just here in Taos. More than 80 hospitals have closed since 2010. There are estimated to be 673 hospitals spread across 42 states that are vulnerable, financially vulnerable. 68% of those are critical access as we are now designated. There are other challenges that we face. There is the concept that bigger is better. And so people feel like if they go to a larger hospital, they're somehow going to receive better care. People who have insurance have options. That's not so easy for those who don't have insurance, don't have easy transportation. Larger facilities have economies of scale that reduce their overall cost of doing business that we can't take advantage of. And in spite of the lower volumes that we realize, we still have to have modern technology. So our cat scan, our laboratory equipment, you go down the line, it still needs to be current technology. And the last challenge that I'll note is recruiting to rural communities is a challenge. The first thing you have to find is someone who wants to live in a rural community. There are shortages everywhere, so professionals have a lot of options available to them. We have call schedules here that are less attractive. In a large community, physicians often don't have to be on call the way they do here. We have to be competitive with pay. Often, we have to be a little bit higher than average in order to attract someone. And we also rely heavily on expensive locals and travelers to fill holes in our schedule. Actually, that's one of the things this year, especially... Actually, that's one of the things this year especially that has been hurting us is the amount of money we're spending on temporary doctors, temporary nurses. Communities directly feel the fact when their hospital closes or is compromised. Lack of local healthcare results in a decline in the overall health of the community. Study after study has shown that. Patients have to drive for hours for care that they need, and that's made even worse in emergency situations. Also, when hospitals are compromised, it means lots of good-paying jobs to the community, lots of professional people in the community. That typically means a drop in real estate crisis. The overall fundamental challenge that we face at Holy Cross and have faced for many years is that our expense structure is not in line with our net revenues. There's an imbalance there. We currently provide a fairly broad meaning of services for a rural hospital. If you look at other rural hospitals our size, we do things that they don't do. An example would be our orthopedic surgery program. This is a program that people from across the country come because of the quality of the care that we provide, the partnership that we have with Taos Orthopedic. But it's important for the community to understand that some of the services that we provide are just not financially viable. And so we have to figure out a way that we're going to get paid for the work that we do. So a couple of examples. Our percentage of government payers, Medicare, Medicaid, those sort, have gone from 58% of our business to 75% of our business. And you need to keep in mind that these payers don't pay our cost of doing business. So if it costs me a dollar to provide the care, I don't get paid a dollar, much less a profit. So our percentage of the payers that are paying less than cost has gone up significantly. In July of 2016, we had a reduction in our Medicaid rates from the state, 5% on our inpatient rates, 3% on our outpatient rates. We were still expected to do the same level of care, but we were being paid less for it. Medicaid currently makes up 30% of our business, so those reductions end up being very significant. Both regular Medicare and Medicare Advantage plans are paying 2% less as a result of this question. Remember, the federal government a couple of years ago did the same where they sequestered money. Medicare and Medicare Advantage were part of that, so we're seeing 2% reductions there. Had we remained a prospective payment system hospital, the status we were before we switched to critical access, we would have lost a million dollars in disproportionate share payments, a program that ended in October of last year. And all insurers, not just the government insurers, but all insurers have stepped up the number of claims that they deny and the amount of prior authorizations that they require. So I painted a pretty bleak picture, but we have been taking actions, and a couple of them are very public. So we were behind, as I highlighted, on our average age of plant, medical equipment, repairs to the building. And so we reached out to the community, and the community stepped up and provided the milli, the topic of our conversation today. The conversion to critical access was another important step, adding, we're estimating it to a million dollars in additional revenue to our bottom line. But it's the last six to nine months that have really been important that I want to focus on for you. So one of the things that I've heard from the community is why did we ever plan to do two big projects, conversion to critical access and the new computer system at the same time? And I can tell you that was not the plan. We had planned to convert to critical access much earlier last year than it turned out happening. The certifying inspection, the first step of the process, was delayed, something we didn't control. The new billing number that we received from Medicare was supposed to take 45 to 60 days to get to us. It took 90 days. Again, something not in our control. The state was slow in publishing our interim rates, something that insurance companies need before they can get us loaded into the system. And then the insurance companies themselves were delinquent in getting us loaded, and actually, it was with the efforts of Representative Ben Ray Luhan recently that a number of those have finally taken the steps necessary to get us properly loaded into their system and get some of those payments that have been sitting out there for some time processed and paid. So we evaluated, before we went live with our new computer system, at two different points. We did in June, and then at the end of August, we asked the question, are we ready to go? And it was an easier question to answer in June. We were still more than 90 days out from the go-live. The vendor that we were using typically uses a 90-day go-live process, so at that point, it seemed like we've got plenty of time. And August, it was a different question. And in August, what we learned was we were going to have about 100 people on-site to support us during the go-live. If we were to delay that, we would lose about half of them because they were scheduled for other assignments. So instead of 100 people, we'd have 50 people. Also, all of the costs related to their travel, we'd still have to pay for the full 100, even though they weren't coming. So after looking at all of the options, we decided we should move forward with the October one go-live. People have asked, you know, the Monday morning quarterback then, knowing what I know now, would I have done it differently? Well, I would have done two things, I would tell you. We changed IT directors in May, and looking back, what I should have done in May is I should have said, let's start the whole process over, because we had been working on our go-live since February. And rather than asking the new director to inherit the work that the previous director had done, in hindsight, what I should have said is, let's start over, just to make sure we haven't missed anything. And in May would have been the time to look at delaying the go-live, not the end of August. But again, that's all Monday morning quarterbacking is. Easy to say that now, knowing what I know in hindsight. So at the October board meeting, we reported to the board that we had lost money for six straight months, and at that time, our year-to-date loss was estimated to be $700,000. We also reported that our days cash on hand was shrinking. We had gone from days that were measured in the low 30s to the high 20s in just one month. And we emphasized to the board that this change was not the result of the critical access conversion. It hadn't happened yet, and it also wasn't part of the EMR. It hadn't happened yet. This was part of that fundamental imbalance that I talked about earlier between our expenses and our net revenue, something that's been going on for years. So during the October board meeting, I was directed to come up with a financial improvement plan. We have affectionately called it "The Plan," and then it has different phases. So the first phase, I was asked to find $500,000, half a million dollars, in expense reductions or revenue enhancements. I was also asked to assure that we would be able to have an even cash flow bottom line at the end of the fiscal year of at least $750,000. So we communicated the plan, Phase One, to our employees, but knowing that we weren't done, we didn't issue a press release at that time. We wanted to make sure that we had a more complete plan before we went to the public. So we laid off five people. The first person we laid off was my chief nursing officer. It was my sense that I had to show that if we're going to affect employee senior leadership, we'd be affected by this. And as I looked at my staff, I had three nurses on my senior leadership team. I didn't have more than one, if anything else. So I felt like I had options within nursing. And as I looked at my options, Sherry Menander, my current interim chief nursing officer, who is also my compliance officer, had experience as a CNO, where Denise Clark, my CNO at the time, did not have experience as compliance. So we laid Denise off, and we're keeping that position open through at least the end of this fiscal year in an effort to save that money. At the time, we also laid off two birth assistants. We hadn't opened our birth center, and there was no deadline as far as when we were going to be able to. So that was in a service that we were going to be impacting right away. We laid off a half-time marketing person as part of that. So we came up with a plan that would achieve that half a million dollars in savings, five people, and then a number of contracts that we canceled as part of that initial effort. The very day that we presented that plan to our executive committee, we learned that our malpractice insurance was going to go up by 85%. And this is related to claims from 2013, 2014 that have now matured. And we had been carrying a deductible of $100,000. By raising that to $250,000, a level that we had been at just a few years ago, we were able to pull the increase from a little over $800,000 increase to $600,000 increase. So last year, our malpractice was $996,000. Now it's $1.6 million. In addition, we were notified that, again, from 2013, Medicare felt like they had overpaid us $691,000. Steve spent the better part of a week trying to show that they were wrong, and at the end of the day, he said, nope, they're right. Medicare is very insistent about getting their money back quickly. They were willing to accept a 30-month repayment schedule, but at 9.75% interest rate. So we're now paying $20,000 a month against that $691,000. All of that goes directly to this year's bottom line. So even though it was from 2013, we have to recognize that, and that contributes to the loss that we have. So Phase Two of the plan, once the board saw these two big numbers, they said, the half a million that we asked for first isn't enough. So they asked for an additional $300,000 in cost savings. So that was the time that we laid off an additional 12 people, 10 full-time people and two, we call them PRN, very limited schedule people. And accounting for the costs of severance that we had to pay in lieu of notice and for the payout of their vacation time, for the remainder of this fiscal year, those layoffs are going to save us about $230,000. Annualized, it would be much more than that. But part of what I was tasked with was accounting for an improvement in the bottom line for the rest of this fiscal year. I made it clear to the employees in the note that I sent out early in January that we're not planning for any further layoffs, but I made two important caveats. Number one, if the board tells me to do more layoffs, then we'll do more layoffs. But number two, we still will do reductions in the workforce, but we will do it through attrition. So as people quit, we will adjust. So I'll use the example, if I have a nurse in the operating room that quits, and I have a nurse in the ER that has operating room experience, and I can afford to move a nurse from the ER to the OR, to me, that makes more sense to make that move internally and save the position, rather than saying, all right, we're not going to replace the OR position, we're going to let somebody in the ER go. So we're going to do it through attrition, unless the board tells me otherwise. We've frozen hiring for a number of management positions through the remainder of this fiscal year. We're replacing our chemistry analyzers. That's going to save us $12,000 a month in expense, and we're going to be able to do new tasks. That's going to generate, we estimate, another $12,000. Throughout this process, we've tried to look at both sides of the equation. We've tried to look not only at the expense side, but the revenue side. Another example, we're moving our ultrasound machine from the WHI client back to the hospital because we can better utilize it in the hospital. We estimate we're going to see an extra $15,000 of revenue a month. Now, it creates a level of inconvenience for the patients at WHI because instead of getting their ultrasound there in the clinic, they're going to have to go to the hospital. But for $15,000 a month, we'll apologize and say, we're sorry for the inconvenience, but we're going to move the machine. Our radiology group, Rural Radiology, has agreed to a one-time $15,000 reduction in their contract. We're replacing our PICSIS units with a wired bin system that will save $6,000 a month. We've canceled our contract with our quality improvement company, the SCUTA Group. That's going to save us about $40,000 for the remainder of this year. We put discretionary advertising on hold and renegotiated our contract with the Taos News. That's going to save us about $25,000 a year. And there are a number of other contracts or processes that we're looking at that are still in the negotiating phase, so we're not in a position to talk about dollars or the specifics. But we have a number of other opportunities that we're looking at that will save significant dollars. Now, we have a small profit in December. That was very encouraging. We made about $15,000. But our year-to-date loss from operations stands at just over $3 million. If you factor in the gain that we have from the investments that we liquidated, our total bottom line, net income, is $2.3 million loss. Long-term, that's just not sustainable. And so while we're taking steps to address the bottom line, over the next few weeks, our emphasis is cash flow, because as we have been struggling to get bills out the door and get paid, the amount of cash that we have has been limited. And so normally, our account's payable balance is in the neighborhood of $1.5 to $2 million. It's now a $5.6 million. So we're way behind on our bills. We openly acknowledge that we're taking out our cash poor situation on our vendors, and we're in regular conversation with them, working out plans to get caught up. As I alluded to, we cashed out $2 million in investments, and two was the gross. We had already used half a million of those investments, so we netted about $1.5 million. We got a line of credit from Sentinel Bank for $2 million. We've accessed just under $1.8 million of that, so we have $205,000 left in the line. And during this time, we received a $1 million payment from the state for the safety net care pool. We normally have an ER balance that counts receivable, what people owe us, insurance companies owe us, of about $17 million. We're now up over $36 million. We estimate that that amount would net us $13.5 to $14 million in cash. That's enough to get us caught up on our bills, about $4 million, to pay back the $2 million that we owe to the bank and have just a little bit left over. Throughout this process, we made payroll our highest priority. Having access to the milli was one of the things that we wanted to have available. We saw it as an insurance policy, just in case our cash flow didn't allow us to have any other option to meet a payroll. As I noted in the thread, my comments in the newspaper, the ballot that was passed allowed three uses: medical equipment, repairs and maintenance to the building, and operations. We were very public in saying we wanted to do the first two, that we were going to limit our use to medical equipment and repairs and maintenance to the building, that we did not want to use the money for operations. And I stand by those statements. At the end of the day, though, if I'm forced to choose between explaining to the community why my use of that milli money needs to change and not meeting a payroll, that's an explanation that I'm prepared to give. So our billing department is doing all that they can to get bills out the door and cash in. I've already mentioned the work that Representative Luhan has done on our behalf. Just so you know, he contacted the four Medicaid managed care organizations directly, and within two, three days, we had executors from all four of those companies calling us, asking what they could do to help us get caught up on our bills. So we really owe Representative Luhan a big thank you. There are other options that can be considered as we move forward. So one of the things that is already on the list is looking at the lease that the county has with the hospital, ways that it can be improved, and we stand ready to have that conversation with you. It's important that the community understand the ownership structure of the hospital. So the county, because I've heard, and I speak to this because I've heard comments that the county should come in and take over the hospital, so I want to address it directly. The county owns the land and the building, but the county doesn't own the hospital. The hospital business is a separate thing. So in order to have a hospital, just a brief list of things, you have to be licensed from the state to operate that hospital. You have to be certified with Medicare and Medicaid to be able to bill. You have to have the necessary insurance policies. You have to own all the equipment, computer supplies needed to provide patient care. You have to employ or contract with staff to actually provide the services. That's just a partial list. And so the partnership that we have with the county allows us, because we can't have a hospital without a building. So it is an important partnership, but I think it's important for the community to understand the differences. I've also heard that we should bring in another company to run the hospital. And in the world of wanting to build, there are five basic models under which a hospital can be operated. The first one is a completely standalone community hospital, and that would actually be the status that we are at right now. The second one would be a community hospital that has a management contract with a hospital management company. That's where we used to be with Quorum. So Quorum used to have a management contract with the hospital. That contract changed back in 2016. So Steve and I used to be employees of Quorum. We no longer are directly employed by Holy Cross. We used to report to Quorum. We now report to the board. So our contract with Quorum is an advisory services agreement. It is not a management agreement. The third model is a community hospital can have a management contract with a tertiary hospital or a healthcare system. So a place with Tyria, a Christmas St. Beast would be examples there. The two other options, you can have a long-term lease with a company. The model there would be Banner. Banner uses that model all the time. And the last one would be a hospital that's owned by a for-profit company. So CHS or LifePoint would be examples of those. So as the community considers the five options... So as the community considers the five options, there would be three main topics that I think have to be looked at. One is local governance. So in the first two options, local governance is maintained, and the other three typically it is not. So someone in another city is deciding what's in the best interest of this community. Availability of local services, it's very common in full management agreements that services are centralized. And not just clinical services, but things like business office and human resources. So if we were to have Santa Fe or an Albuquerque firm running the hospital, it would be very common for them to pull those jobs to their central campus. And then the last one is availability of local jobs. As services decline within the local community, those jobs leave the community. So I've already talked about the relationship with Quorum. Quorum no longer has a management contract, Steve and I directly reported to the board. And another misconception is that somehow Quorum pulls profits out of the organization. That has never been the case. It's a flat service contract. And it's services that just the GPO alone more than pay for the cost of the contract. But if we didn't have a contract with Quorum, you would need to buy those services from someone else. Many of them are specialized, and you would only need the person for a month at a time. And so to employ someone, an example would be to review our physician contracts for compliance with the Stark Act kickback. We couldn't afford to do that for four months out of a whole, four weeks out of a whole year. That's a service that Quorum provides to us. If we didn't contract with Quorum, we'd have to find someone else that would provide many of the services that we receive from them. And it's also been suggested that the Albuquerque or Santa Fe hospitals can do a better job of running the hospital, but I want to emphasize those three points. Really need to be careful about issues of local governance, loss of service, and loss of jobs. And that went specifically to our union. So our contract with the 1199 New Mexico has a survivor clause in it. It says if Holy Cross were to close, the contract would survive. I can tell you that any hospital that would come in to pick up the pieces would object to and would fight that clause. So lawyers would win. No offense. So moving forward, we have an immediate crisis, that's our cash position. We have a short-term challenge that's getting caught up on our bills and cost cutting. And we have a long-term opportunity. And I think this is a good first step. As representatives of the community, you can be our first step of engaging everyone and talk about the mix of services that everyone wants and what you're willing to pay for. Because at the end of the day, if we're not paid enough by insurance companies to maintain services, then we have to make hard choices. What do we keep and what do we close? So our plan, part of this is already underway. We're getting caught up on our cash collection so we can get caught up with our vendors. Our billing department is doing great work, and we've brought in additional resources. Yesterday, a second external supervisor started with this, and then we have brought in a billing supervisor to assist with issues related to computer system setup. We're looking at what services actually pay for themselves. In order to make decisions based on data and not emotion, I've asked Steve to highlight at least a dozen different services that aren't required. Examples, we are required to have an emergency department, so there's no question, we have to have an ED. We're not required to have a wound care program, or an antitillery program, or even an OD program. So I need to know what the cost of those services are so that we can make informed decisions. So Steve is in the process of collecting that data. And then we want to engage the community. Again, I think this is a great first conversation. People can help right away. One of the things that we need is volume. I call that voting with your feet. When people drive to Espanola to Santa Fe, it hurts us because our hope overhead is fixed. And every additional volume that we have contributes to the bottom line. So voting with your feet is one thing. The newspaper editorial talked about philanthropy. I have a meeting scheduled with the head of the local foundation to talk about how we can leverage that part of the equation. And at some point, and I know that you're going to think I'm crazy for even saying this, but the topic of additional tax support may need to be talked about. It was mentioned, Espanola gets four mils, we get one mil. Big difference. We wanted to get the one, use it responsibly, and then we could come back and ask for more. Another point, the reason there hasn't been any posting as far as the use of the mill levy is we haven't really used it. We've only had one request, and that was at the end of last year, and for memorandum, it was just under $50,000. I talked with my staff just yesterday, there are three projects that I want to have to present under our existing memorandum. And one would be an ultrasound machine for the emergency department, two would be a new EKG system, and three would be a big project that would address many of the outstanding repair and maintenance projects on the hospital. So it would be boilers, it would be air vendors, it would be lighting. And one of the advantages we see to the project that we're going to present to you is that there are guaranteed energy savings as a result of this. So I think it's about $170,000 a year in guaranteed savings. So those are three projects that we're planning to move forward using the existing 2.4, I think it is, that's sitting in the mill levy account. Okay, but I'm almost done. Good things are happening in spite of our financial challenges, and I'd like to highlight just a few. Last July, we had a very successful inspection and certification visit related to our annual DMV. DMV is the company that we use for the annual inspections instead of the joint commission. Many people are familiar with the joint commission, we use DMV. They also did the initial certification inspection for our critical access status. That was a very well-received inspection. In September of last year, Holy Cross was one of five New Mexico hospitals to receive their HFA and Science Quality Award. That award recognizes hospitals for their high performance on quality care outcome measures and patient satisfaction. In January, we issued a press release regarding our five-star rating from CMS. We are one of only two hospitals in the state to receive that award. First time New Mexico has ever had a five-star rating. Just last month, our laboratory was inspected by the College of American Pathologists. The survey found no issues related to patient care, and the inspectors were very complimentary of the department. And then moving to cash, over the weekend, I signed a contract with one of our insurance companies. They're going to prepay us $1.1 million against claims that are currently outstanding as they process them. So that as they process them, then we would every month pay them back, but this helps us in our immediate need for cash. And just last night, I'm happy to report that we deposited $494,000 into our checking account, and we believe that at least $300,000 of that was due to the efforts of Representative Louhan, one of the insurance companies, and it processed, reprocessed many of the claims that were sitting out there. So in summary, the resolution that we submitted to the county was an effort to have what I described as an insurance policy, just in case we had no other option to meet a payroll. We submitted the resolution ahead of our need so that we wouldn't have time to talk about it. And we didn't have any terms, so why didn't we talk about what it would be a loan? We didn't feel it was our place to set terms, and we thought that would be part of the conversation, was it a good idea or not? So if in fact it's a conversation, we understand that there could easily be terms associated with it. But we ended payroll, so we made payroll last Friday and had $1 million left after we were done making payroll. With the payment that we received last night, so given our current cash position, we are not making a request for mill levy money. We're happy to talk about a process, if in fact at some point we need that insurance policy, but for today, we're not asking for mill levy money. With that, I would be happy to stand for questions.
I'm sure we all have some questions. I guess we'll go to Mr. Llaner first or something first. I have a full page of stuff here, so I had another turn too.
Thank you, Bill. How much did you guys spend in capital expenditures last year?
I don't know if the type I had, Steve would be able to answer that, but I would say it was very little.
Hundred thousand, couple hundred thousand.
Somewhere between half a million and a million, I don't have a number, it wasn't very much.
There is about a million a year for a while there. And, but you chose not to use any of the mill levy money to meet those expenditures in 2017. My understanding was part of the reason was you wanted to wait until the critical access transformation had occurred, at which time you'd get a percentage over and above the mill.
That's correct. Had we spent money on capital prior to being critical access, all of the depreciation would not have been recognized, and we wouldn't have gotten that credit, if you will. Right now, it's about 30 cents on the dollar based on our cost structure. So the delay was very intentional. The other part of it was there were elements of capital that we bought that we didn't think fit the definition for the mill levy. So an example would be our new computer system. While we could argue that that would be medical equipment, we didn't think that that would resonate with the community. So we're not using mill levy money to pay for our new computer system, and that would be part of the dollars that we've spent over the last year.
Well, with the 30 cents on the dollar in it, the mill levy will provide about $6.5 million?
Correct. So $5 million for the mill levy itself, the matching gets another 1.6 million.
And is still your intention to spend about $6.5 million over the next two years to utilize the mill levy?
Yes, sir. So the rehab project that I talked about on the building, that's a 1.4 something million project on its own. So we're planning to move forward now that we're critical access, accessing the mill levy for the two uses that we committed to: medical equipment, repairs and maintenance on the building.
Do you anticipate that the $6.5 million, that all of the $6.5 million will meet the list that has been already incorporated into the memorandum?
We believe so. So the projects that we're bringing forward would be on the list that we submitted last June. The new list will anticipate what needs are this year and make adjustments as necessary.
Okay. It sounds like you said you had like $13 million net with, you know, the large backlog of accounts receivable, and then you clicked off a few expenses and you said it will get evened out, but it didn't sound to me like the expenses were going to meet it. It sounded like you might have a couple of million left over for cash reserves.
So if you think that we're normally at $17 million of AR, and you discount that by 40, then we actually get 40. That's the number that we think needs to be there just for normal. So that's what I'm backing out of the 13.5.
Okay. What will your cash reserves be a year from now, more or less, without any additional cuts or enhancements?
So I've ordered a new crystal ball. I pretended that we ordered it from, we're on credit hold, so it's delayed. But our initial goal is...
Your crystal ball?
Is 20 days. That's the first threshold that the board has set for me, 20 days. Ultimately, 50 is where we want to be. I'd argue that that's at least a three-year window.
But 20 is not, I mean, 20 seems dual.
Yes.
Within the next year, you know, once you're past this crisis that occurred for so many different reasons, it sounds as though you can, even under current levels, get back on a moderately stable footing.
Move out of the crisis mode.
Out of the crisis mode, and that includes the additional million from critical access in operations.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I certainly hope that we can just stick to the memorandum that we have, but you know, it is touch and go for the next month or so, and we'll see what happens. I'll certainly be open to listening to at least changing some of the capital expenditures listed to more maintenance CapEx, you know, still having the entire $5 million of taxpayer money go with the capital expenditures as opposed to operations. And it sounds to me like you'll be able to fulfill your promises to the community in that way, and hopefully you'll be able to just fulfill the promises to the county under the memorandum. But I do understand that it's been really difficult in the past month, and glad it wasn't my job to do what you guys have had to go through. And so, you know, I understand you considering that as an insurance policy. And we'll just have to wait and see. Last question. The list of changes that you made, a few layoffs and some potential others, is that going to bring you, what is that going to bring you to in the salary percentage? You're at like 56 now, are you still going to be, are they too small to move that number?
I don't recall the estimate. Steve, do you know?
No, they'll make an impact, whether it's 1% or 4%, I haven't done that calculation.
So as an example, we normally, prior to all of this, spend about $160,000 a day to operate the hospital. With the changes that we've made already, we've seen that fall to $153,000 a day. And we don't believe that the full impact of the changes that we made have trickled through yet. But the percentage, because of the PLT payouts and the severance, the current numbers still are reflecting not a true bottom line, if that makes sense?
Yeah, because maybe, you know, longer term, making those adjustments and then switching out of those tasks, any chance you get to recruit somebody, obviously you know how beneficial that is, both to the community and employment and to your own bottom line. And I'm optimistic you guys can make some progress on that. So thank you for the presentation.
Okay. First off, I want to thank you for inviting me to your last board meeting that I attended. That was very nice of you to ask me, I was glad I attended. And you, that means that you have a little bit of value there. What was your trend base cash prior to when you changed to critical access? If I recall in your briefings that you were giving us, we were jumping up each month, and we, I think even got over the 30 days, and were sustained that, is that correct?
Yeah, so if you go back in time, my first month on the JFJ rate is cash.
Right.
And then we got into a future of safety net, peer pool money. And at one point, we were actually...
And that's about $1.3 million?
Yeah, it's about a million.
Yeah, okay.
I think at that point, we actually, did we get the full year?
We got three-quarters of it all, then one payment.
So that really pushed us up at that point in time. So we were flirting with high 30s for a period of time, but we settled for a number of months where we were low 30s as far as days cash. And then earlier in the summer, it began to come down. So in October, we went from low 30s to the high 20s. And it was at that point that the board became alarmed and said, we have to address this with a specific plan, not a little thing here, a little thing there.
We had a decent trend that was rising, if I remember right.
Yes.
When we started talking, when you came originally for the asking us about the mill levy, and I'm going to read the exact question here in just a second. I just don't recall ever asking for anything related to payroll or that kind of operation. It was pretty much what you stated, the three things that, the projects that you were talking about. And I believe that's what we heard, and I believe that's what the voters heard as well. Our attorney is the one that inserted the word operations in there because in researching other mills, that was the standard. But that was never your request that I recall.
That's correct. And part of the reason was salaries can be a very subjective thing, and with Steve and I coming on the payroll, we wanted to remove any doubt that we were messing with our own compensation using mill levy money. And so that was part of our rationale in saying, we're not going to use it for operations.
Okay, well, this is what the question actually reads in the proposition. Should Taos County employ or impose a mill levy in the amount of $1 on each $1,000 of net taxable value of property in the county, a one-mill levy? Effective beginning of 2016 tax year for a period of four years to fund the operation and maintenance of Holy Cross Hospital either directly or through our health care facilities contract? That was the question to the board, just so that's out there for the record. Asking for money for operations one-time recurring cost like you're doing is pretty much similar to what the state did last year in raiding the fire fund. Everyone told them, it's not going to work, it's not going to work, and they took $87 million from the fire fund, $10 million from law enforcement. million from the fire fund, $10 million from the law enforcement protection fund and now, and we kept telling them, "It's going to hurt those people, oh, but we need it now, we need it now, we need it now, no, it's going to hurt us later, it's going to hurt us later." No one listened to the hurt us later, guess what's happening now? It's hurting big time. It's hurting the law enforcement protection fund, it's hurting the finance authority and it's hurting the fire departments across the state. So I just throw that out there as an example, they took the money for a Band-Aid and in a sense, if we were to give it to you for payroll or something, it'd be like if my elbow was sore and I taped an aspirin to it and expected it to do some good. I really don't think that that would really do us anything. So I don't think that's what the intent and if that would be good. You said that services would decline in order to make budgets and everything, but you've already done certain things like the laundry, dialysis, the dermatology and you reduced the number of beds, but I'm hearing rumors out there, as you said, I mean, you're thinking the next step is to close OB. That's a pretty dangerous venture, I think, to put our citizens in and I understand that not everything at a hospital makes money. I get that. But the purpose of our hospital, as I've always said, is to provide services that our community needs. You answered that very well on what you said, there's some services we can and some we can't. Closing OB would make you a little less popular, I think, than when all the rumors came out of what you were coming here for today, so I don't know. And then you talked about the traveling that it would do, but the transfers that you do and the increase of transfers is causing travel for people already and I understand that, you know, you don't have as many beds as you used to, you've got to transfer people out. Any trauma, we've never been a trauma facility, those always have gone and stopped, but then there's other things, transferring somebody for observation and stuff like that. That's causing the traveling that you said that you wanted to avoid and so I just didn't understand, understand that part. And so, kind of closing a little bit of my comments, you know, we're bringing the locals and you recognize that's a problem, but you know, UNM nursing school right here in our own town and they're putting locals out. I really don't think that we're hiring locals. When the board interviewed you, when you came from Corvus, there had to be an interview process, right? Were there locals that applied for that or anything and were they ever considered for any of those positions?
It's my understanding that one of the former county managers asked you to consider it and I don't believe he was interviewed because he didn't have healthcare experience.
Well, you know, with all the awards and recognition and those really nice recognitions that you stated close to the end of your presentation, so all of that's going on and everybody loves the quality of care, I do personally, you guys have cut me open, I think it's nine times in the last few years because I didn't know how to fly one day and everything's been perfect. So I've never got a question of quality of care and everything that you've done for me, for my family, for my friends. So there must be something else wrong at Holy Cross that puts us into this position and so that's what we need to identify at some point, I guess. Let me look through, I can't even read my own writing anymore, so let me see if I missed anything, but I thank you again for being upfront and bringing, allowing me to attend that board meeting. Had a great conversation with Steve that day who was on your executive session and he was, he was very open and transparent with every question I had with him and I admired that about him and I wanted to thank him publicly for that. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to be able to listen more to some of the public opinion and thoughts as to what they have. You hit on some of the questions that I have written down. I'm not sure if the one question that I do have is if you did take a cut in compensation yourself.
So my base pay has not been affected, but as we encourage our employees to take time off without pay, I've taken advantage of that on a number of occasions, so work pays that I didn't get paid for. So I have supported different activities in the hospital, so rather than having the hospital, an example would be rather than the hospital pay for their Christmas luncheon that we do every year, the senior leadership team has stepped up and sponsored that. So I've done a combination of reductions in my pay through days off that I worked that I didn't get paid for and then also making donations to the hospital.
Talk a little bit more about quality of care, what are people complaining about to the hospital?
So we get specific complaints, complaints from the emergency department, many times it's more for what I would describe as customer service issues. I wasn't treated with respect, I wasn't listened to, I wasn't treated in a timely manner. We hear much more of that than that the diagnosis was wrong, I didn't get the medicine I needed. We hear a little bit of that, but not so much. We hear complaints from our bill, that our bills are difficult to understand, that is universal law. I'd like to be able to fix that, but that's one of the areas where we get complaints right now. As Commissioner Fambro noted, overall, there's a fairly high level of satisfaction with care. It's more either interpersonal communication or bill is more over shared back.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Pat, for being here. Who do you think is the highest CEO that's paid in the county?
Not knowing what the other CEOs that I make, I couldn't hazard a guess.
You mentioned a clause in a contract that might be objected to, could you provide that to our county manager?
I'm sorry.
It was referenced to one of your contracts, had a certain clause if, say, the hospital were to change hands?
Oh, the contract we have with our union has a survivor clause in it that says that if the hospital goes out of business, that the union still would remain for whatever hospital would come in and would take over. And so I'm not being questioned, I mean, that's a valid part of our contract, but I can say another hospital coming in would say that that clause doesn't apply to them. They want to party to the contract, why should they be bound by it? That, that's what I was meaning to describe. I wasn't meaning to describe any conflict between the hospital and the union related to that clause.
Thank you. And you mentioned you had an audit, what year was that?
We have an audit every year, a financial audit and that's something, I believe we provide that to the county and that's something if folks have an interest, that's something we can make available. I've talked with Steve about putting that on our website.
What year was the last audit?
So it would have been for last fiscal year, so 2017, is that right?
Yep, 5/31/17.
And who did the audit, please?
BKD.
BKD of Denver.
BKD?
BKD is a dog, it's a national auditing firm.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else commissioned before we go to the public comments?
I would like to-
Bye. Go ahead, Vice Chair Daniels.
I appreciate, Mr. Patton, I apologize for not being able to be attending today's meeting, first, well, the second, well, by concern of then, well, I think that sometimes when you're back against a wall, you have to make decisions. Unfortunately, we do, everybody's back against the wall and when the county is facing a position, hospital position, our constituents not knowing what the status is going to be at the hospital, of course, there's those predicaments where we have to make, you know, decisions to decide and find out if there's any opportunity for other entities to come in. So it's good to hear that you're taking progressive steps, but I think it's part of our process to continue to find out what is available and to also find out what tier of people to continue or getting new services to us. And I think our commissioners have that, may have expressed some of that concerns to their comments, but I'm not willing to sit down with anybody on the board, sit down with you and talk about some of the things that, you know, the public in the northern part of the county has concerned about a kind of treatment they like to get and maybe this to the hospital, so I think it's still going to be more of a one-on-one conversation that should be brought through the attention of the board. So with that, because I'm not there, I don't want to go into any much further discussion, but I do appreciate your presentation and we should be continuing this conversation violently if not once in a while. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Daniels. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question or comment as we early stated?
Mr. Chairman, would you like us to make a motion to bring back the Citizens Forum at this point since it was simple?
Yes, let's go ahead and as previously postponed to a specific time of this current agenda, I would entertain a motion to allow comments regarding the hospital presentation under the guidelines of Citizens Forum.
Thank you, yes, I make a motion if we do so.
A second.
Okay, motion, a second.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Daniels.
Hey, Mark.
Say yes, Mark.
Mark May have left.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes, okay. So now we will reopen and get the timing. And if you do come forwards, please state your name clearly for the record and again, we're glad you're here. Bye.
Good morning, Carol Nalarco with the Pinker East Pinellas County Coalition and I have a, this was quite a surprising presentation this morning to hear that somehow the mill levy was like an insurance policy for the hospital and I was surprised as I was to hear that. In particular, I was surprised that the boiler had been replaced because I went to three county, three of the meetings that were held prior to the mill levy and that was stated as a number one priority and justification for a large-scale capital purchase that was needed by the hospital and that's what I think voters heard was going to happen with those funds. And as someone who's worked a lot in government, I approach the healthcare system from a different perspective, which is how much money is available in any given community in this catchment area for healthcare, including a hospital? And you start with what are the funds available and you build your budget from there. We're kind of in this thing where we've done it this way, we're making, you know, minor changes along the way, but I'm not familiar with any studies that have been done about what's realistic for this community with the high unemployment, with some of the changes that may be happening in Medicaid, for example, how to proactively get our hands around what's available for healthcare in this catchment area and how do we build a healthcare system that can be supported by the funds available? It's a lot of lucky things and, you know, payment from this fund or that fund and I'm, as someone that works with our volunteer fire department, I'm very familiar with that fund, that, those funds that were lost and some of us worry about other state funds that may be lost, will the Medicaid buy in if it passes, will that enhance the number of Medicaid beneficiaries? There just seems to be no planning, that it's very knee-jerk and reactive and I hope at some point we can get beyond that. And I think that having total transparency on the website for those of us that understand the healthcare system can look at that data on a monthly basis, see the audits, see other things, because none of us are here because we oppose the hospital. We're here because this hospital was built with public funds because the old Holy Cross was closing and a for-profit group came in and announced that they were going to build a hospital in Taos at the late 80s and that is the reason why the voters that know we want a public hospital, we're willing to tax ourselves to do it. It's my understanding that there were additional mill levy that helped equip the hospital. It would be interesting to see what contents of the hospital belong to the public or the county as the leaseholder and what belonged to the hospital, Taos Health Systems per se, because we don't have enough information to make a really informed decision. So I just urge some kind of planning process that looks at what's available. We hear about the rural hospitals closing, the majority of them are in states that did not do the Medicaid expansion. With regard to critical access hospital, many states have too many, they have critical access hospitals 15 miles apart from each other, those are the ones that are failing for the most part. So we need the full picture. What are the projections for the healthcare system? How do we get our hands around, you know, what is available to really operate a hospital here? Because we want it here for the long term and we want those nursing students to stay here and we want medical students that come here as part of their training to find this community a really valuable and wonderful place to work. But I encourage not using the mill levy as a checkbook for the hospital to cover shortages. I think that just sets a precedent for other tax funds that may be raised in Taos County and I think we need to, you know, really encourage the mill levy to be stayed for what the voters thought it was for, which was, you know, improving the hospital. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll take the opportunity, Jim.
Make sure you state your name.
Nobody but nobody. For the record, Mayor Barone, and I just thank you guys, thank you guys for listening. I'd like to thank the CEO. You know, it's a great opportunity, it's something that we don't want to lose in our communities, our community hospital. And one of the things, when I sat behind the dice with you guys, one of the things that we asked for and I think Leandro would be a great asset to, if we could get somebody from the county, because you guys are the leader, somebody on the county on that board, there's got to be a way to make, get that position so it doesn't get to this point before you guys know about it. I think if we had, if you had somebody on the board, it would have been a month ago, two months ago that you guys would have known that it would have been struggling. And I can just say, I think it's time now that the hospital would consider that. I know the way the policy was written, there wasn't room for that, but I think at this time, I think, you know, if we had Leandro sitting on that board, I think the financial end, you guys would have known about it ahead of time, there would have been some opportunities to be able to address this further on. I think it's critical in our community that we have a hospital, Jim, I hate to say it, we are getting older and we need a hospital right here, we don't want to, you know, if something happens to us, we don't want to be transferred out and then if we are transferred out, it puts a burden on our families also. So it's important, we have a ski area, we have schools, you know, we have a lot of kids that, you know, are needing that type of care and we just want to make sure that we have, you know, rural hospitals are hardly fun, you know, I know that, it's, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, the payments that we receive for the services are small, so it, you know, in our community especially because we don't have a lot of people on insurance and it's hard to make ends meet, but there's ways to do it. I think this is a small step in bringing the knowledge, you know, so that we have somebody to sit on that board to be able to bring that back to us. So I just want to say that and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thing known, we'll conclude the citizens portion of this. Any follow-up before I go back to Mr. Patton, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Quick question, does the county own any equipment?
No. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, it looks like once upon a time when we first built the hospital, there may have been a few pieces- built the hospital, there may have been a few pieces of equipment that we did own as an asset, those have probably been retired at this point, and is no longer on their books or are just, um, the building is our asset, the building and the land.
And the comment about creating a budget with the money that is available, is that something maybe we could all sit down and look at and start with a projected revenue stream, and then work back from that?
If I may, the assumption you have to start with is volume, not revenue. So how many of what sort of things are you going to do? Then you have to add payer mix. So how many of those, uh, make up, general surgery procedures, how many of those are gonna be commercially insured, Medicare, Medicaid uninsured? So it's, it would be nice if we could say we've got, make up a number, fifty million dollars, and then figure out what we can afford for that fifty million. Um, in healthcare, unfortunately, it's almost the other way around, we have to look at what a volume is, project what the revenue is, add in elements of bad debt, contractual adjustments, and then we end up with a number that then we budget expenses to. But, but the conversation as far as what services stand on their own, what services don't, and if they don't, hospitals call it cross-subsidization. So I make money here, general surgery, typically make money on surgeries, and I can use it to subsidize a department that doesn't make money. But once I run out of surgery money, where do I get to subsidize other departments? And so having the community engaged and decide which are the most important. OB was mentioned, and, and I would tell you, OB would be one of the last departments I would wanna see us cut, close. It's very clear in the literature that when a family has a positive birthing experience, they bond with that hospital, and they will continue to receive the majority of the care while they remain in that community. Not having OB here allows us then to have families bonding with hospitals in other communities, and that will help us not just for OB, but for all the care that that family needs. When I was in Wyoming, as part of a master plan project, we had an economic study performed, and we learned that for every hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars of healthcare spending that left the community, more than a thousand dollars in retail spending left the community. So, so when we talk about retaining services here, it's not just selfish, it's partly selfish, but it's not just selfish. We recognize the impact transfers have on the community. Families that have to drive down, when we ship someone to Santa Fe, families that then have to drive down, we get that, so we're committed to trying to reduce as much as we can transfers, and to circumvent, OB would be one of the last that I need to, that I would want to cut, but I need to know what the impact is. If the number is half a million versus two million, the decision is different, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Corle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Patton, for the presentation. I just wanted to make one point, and it is true, uh, Mr. Patton mentioned that some of our neighboring hospitals do get more tax revenue, and I just wanted to clarify that, um, I believe Espinola is about four mills, Brumleyo County has some examples, two or three mills, but you look at their tax base, that's a significant amount of taxes going into the hospital. Um, Taos County, when the hospital was built, had a GRT specific to the hospital, there's a half a cent GRT, it's pretty substantial. Um, over time, that has been repurposed for our schools and U and M Taos. Um, I know it's had a significant impact on schools and U and M Taos, but going forward, I know that that's certainly an opportunity for us to look at other taxes, um, it is a few years away, but the best we could hope for on that particular tax is it, it gets paid off early, and we have an opportunity to look at it in 2021, most likely to be realistic. So I just wanted to make that clear, it does have an impact on a hospital, um, if the taxes aren't there to support it in that sense. But we did make an agreement with the taxpayer, and I appreciate that the hospital at this time is allowing us to maintain that agreement. It is substantially important for us to maintain that hospital, that building, and the land of underneath it needs to be improved. The hospital is many, many years old, and we do need to put those improvements in place just for the future of healthcare, many changes have been made over the years. And over the last couple of months, I've taken a bit of a crash course in hospitals. Um, I've always been really good with financial statements, understanding, you know, profit and loss and the balance sheet. Hospitals are very unique, they're certainly unique, like bank in one aspect, we do have a lot of things that, um, accounts receivable is amazing in a hospital, I don't understand why it's not true, it's not a true number. And so just a couple of comments I wanted to put out there, the assets of a hospital would be essential to maintaining an open door, um, and that's something that our board would need to look into deeply, and I would have to look into further, the assets that are required just to keep that door open. It's true, having a building by itself doesn't allow us to operate a hospital. So just a few comments that I wanted to put out there, through some of the research over the last few months, and just being more involved, it certainly is a predicament, and I think we're coming out of it, I agree that it's essential that we have that hospital for our community, so thank you, Mr. Patton, for being here to data express all of those issues. I know it's not easy, it's never easy to be put in the public light when you're having those kinds of issues, but I appreciate the transparency today. Thank you.
One more, and I appreciate your comments, and we have enjoyed working with you, and we welcome the opportunity. Now, to the mayor's comments about representation from, um, the county on the board, the board has had a conversation in general terms about that, uh, and I don't believe that the board resists that in any way. As you know, our current lease, a lot of which was structured around certain debt covenants, um, didn't allow it. So we would hope that that would be one of the topics as we look at the lease, that we would, uh, that we would, uh, address, and the idea of Mr. Cordova, uh, being on the board, as we discussed, is something that we would welcome, the, we want to go in eyes wide open, is he serving as a liaison, uh, or is he serving as a full-voting member of the board? Because if he's a full-voting member of the board, then issues of conflict of interest, but the concept is something that the board is very open, uh, to describing, and if Mr. Cordova is someone that's selected, we would be happy to work with him.
Yeah, I think it was envisioned as being like an ex-official, you know, somebody after people. We, before, um, commissioners, um, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, obviously, you have fallen behind on capital expenditures for the plant, um, half a million to a million a year, doesn't equate with depreciation, it's not enough to keep up, but we are looking at six point five over the next couple of years, that's a long ways, that can go a long ways to catching up with the plant that's, and as our manager says, of course, that's, that's critical to this board. And, and that half cent, I think that half cent is like two million a year, something like that, uh, is a few years off, it'll be a debate going forward. The mill levy, the one mill currently is running about one point two a year. Um, and I know one of the problems with hiring nurses that come out of U and M is that prez in Espinola is able to afford a much higher signing bonus than we are, and so I think he does put us in a little bit of a competitive disadvantage, but, um, it is something that we need to be able to do. And so, again, thank you, Bill, it was a good presentation, learned a lot, um, I think, you know, it's, uh, it's a drag that it got to such a critical, uh, situation, but it seems like you're working your way out of it, and we wish you the best, and, um, glad to know that you can, uh, come before us and have a good dialogue, so thank you.
And, and along those lines, commissioners, would it be your request, or would it be helpful, um, both to the public and to the commission, if for them until this crisis, uh, whatever, we have Mr. Patton come back as, maybe once a month, what would be your visions on that? And, and it also will help keep the public more informed if we talk about it openly if you're put, any, any thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman, no, we are still going, planning to have an executive session.
Randy, yes, Randy wants to talk to us some more, some of the questions that we had after the last one, and, and so we're just, it's probably gonna be way shorter than the last one, but it's just basically to answer the questions that were developed in the last one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but if, we would like to have Mr. Patton back if, uh, because I think it is good for the public, and it's good for us, and we've got a good dialogue going, and I think that's always helpful.
My suggestion would be after every board meeting.
Okay.
Because then we have current information that the board has seen, and then we're gonna present that to the commission.
By coming here today, you did make this note, so there's a, so, Steve, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just one quick question.
Okay.
Our manager mentioned assets of the hospital. Do you currently have loans, um, for hospital equipment? Do you have any mortgages out?
So I don't believe that we have any mortgages, so, we would have certain financing of, uh, equipment, so our new chemistry and lawyers are on what's called a reagent rental. So we don't buy the equipment outright, we pay for the reagents, and then at the end of a five-year term, we would own the equipment. Um, we financed our computer system, um, internal financing, um, other share financing, Steve?
Yeah, we've got probably, uh, four long-term leases, generally they run their, um, three years or five years. Uh, we have some OR equipment that's in the fourth year of a long-term lease, and we have, um, uh, some lab equipment that's on a, uh, five-year lease also in its fourth year.
But, but nothing that would qualify as a mortgage?
No. And those leases, all of those leases have a one dollar buyout, so at the end of the lease, uh, we can purchase the equipment for a dollar, and most of that equipment has a seven to ten-year useful life.
Is there an interest charge on that leasing arrangement?
Yes.
I think maybe at some point that would be helpful for us to take a look at exactly where your leases are, uh, what's your interest rate, do they have penalties if you pay the last?
Prepaid.
Uh, prepaid?
Prepaid cut.
Do you have any prepay?
I'd have to look at the individual contracts, um, generally they do, uh, but I try to negotiate that out, but some of these leases occurred before I arrived four years ago. I don't know the answer without looking at the individual leases.
Do you have a estimate off the top of your head about how much?
The interest rates?
Your leasing value is, but how much it's costing you, or what your total lease?
I know on the, uh, OR equipment, the lab equipment, the interest rate that we're, we're paying is less than four percent, it's like three point eight seven a percent, uh, and, and the interest rates were low, um, three or four years ago when those were entered into, so, um, the, the actual dollar amount, I can't say on a monthly basis, how much we're paying in interest charges.
But maybe, you know, that's something you could bring back to us, to that, those dollar amounts, including the total amount of interest charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Patton, thank you, thank you for the nice minutes. We'll see you down the road. Um, Commissioner, before we break, we do need to, Randy, do you want to turn things up? Because my reasons are tired of having a break. We, uh, we need to go on with the public hearing, um, before we talk about any breaks or anything, so we will continue on with the meeting to item nine, the public hearing. Item A is approval of a liquor license application, number one zero seven one three five nine, and, uh, number one zero seven six one five four, an application to allow general public to express her views on the request for a craft distilled liquor license application with attached taproom located at seven Gabi Llan Drive in Apurado, uh, eight seven five two nine, the request, uh, this Taos Desert Spirits LLC. So, no, Mark got cut off, I need to get him back on the phone, um, for this. The opening presentation before we go to the public on this public hearing will be by our planning staff, the aforementioned, Rudy Parra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, uh, I just wanted to give you a brief statement about this application. They did go through our Taos, uh, Taos County Planning Commission, and they did receive an approval from the Taos County Planning Commission on December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, to operate this proposed, uh, distillery and wine tasting facility. And so they did, uh, meet all the criteria of Taos County Land Use Development Code, and in addition, uh, they did get approval, uh, from the Upper Los Angeles Neighborhood Association for their project, so they did get buy-in from the Neighborhood Association, and they did get, uh, they did meet all the criteria of the Taos County Land Use Regulations when they got approvals from the planning commission for their proposed business.
Okay, um, anything else on the opening presentation?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, at this time unless the commission has had any questions for them.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask the applicant if they have anything they would like to present, um, on their behalf. And please state your name for the record. Uh, you need to be sworn in by our deputy clerk.
Do you swear in firm under oath in the penalty of law for perjury that the test money you brought to give is to a federal?
I do.
State your name for the record.
My name is Oliver Knight. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for your time and consideration. I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Oliver Knight, and this is my partner in business and life, Kristy Wayne. We are the owners and founders of Taos High Desert Spirits, doing business as high bourbon. Um, I'd like to share with the commission some words about who we are and the intentions we have for high bourbon. First and foremost, Taos is our home. I'm a native Taosanero. My immediate family, the Knights, the Fern offices, the Ortizes, the San Diego, the Jean Tets, hearken back many generations. I have deep roots in this community. Point being, the mountain, the town, and my family are very much the reason I moved back to Los Angeles, I moved back to Taos after spending eighteen years in Los Angeles funding a career of DJing and acting. Something else was calling. So ten years ago, I moved back to Taos, I was home. I've got Christian and Matt Paul Day at the Rovers Foundation, while she was writing a novel. And so the story goes, we live in Taos with our dog, our cat, and our sixteen chickens. Our vision is this, high bourbon classic handcrafted single malt whiskey in bourbon right here in Taos. We will be located at seven Gabi Llan Drive in the Upper Los Angeles neighborhood. If approved by the commission, we would be the first distillery in Taos County since Charlie Mills in Orodongo provided western whiskey in eighteen forty-seven. We will produce and bottle our entire product from seed to sip in our very own manufacturing facility. High bourbon is the expression of values that are deeply important to us. Our mission is to produce a quality product that will bring beauty, enjoyment, contentment, and celebration to people's lives. Inherent to this mission is our goal to make a positive impact on our community, to conduct our business responsibly and in balance with nature. We decided to start a distillery because it joins together many of our different passions, our love of Taos with its unique heritage of wild beauty, our love of real liquor whiskey, our love of working with the land and growing things, our love of the art and the creative process. In many ways, high bourbon is our love liquor to Taos. We want to create quality jobs, and we aim to employ twenty full-time positions, not including ourselves, so that fewer people in Taos have to do the task shovel, and more people can thrive. We are committed to paying our employees a living wage, and we also want to feel more economic activity in Taos. As you walk through the county building, you'll notice black and white photos that depict our heritage of Taos culture, which was once farming and agriculture. Taos is one of the great baskets of the four corners, and not so long ago, I can remember when my grandma Frenales was plowing the lower forty and watering the field with the esecia and growing corn that him and my grandma would turn into chicos. We want to help revitalize our agricultural heritage by working with local farmers and buying grains they produce. Our business model relies on exporting the majority of our product out of state, yet bringing economic benefits directly into our community. Our tasting room is simply a marketing tool. Our tasting room is simply a marketing tool. Finally, we respect the plan and the people we've become of to achieve our mission. We are committed to using sustainable practices that conserve water and that minimize our carbon footprint. In conclusion, I'd like to have my partner Christie Wang, CEO of High Bourbon, to share some words.
Should I raise my hand?
Yes.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear in firm under oath and penalty of law for perjury of the testimony about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state it.
Christie Wang. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And thank you to Rocky Mountain Youth Car for being here and making that statement. We appreciate all of the good work that they do in our community and we take their concerns very seriously. I just want to say that we are committed to conducting our business responsibly and ensuring that alcohol is enjoyed responsibly. Our tasting room is not going to be a late-night type of establishment. It really is a marketing tool with ninety percent of our business model relying on exporting products out of state and overseas. Our servers are not only going to be trained via the New Mexico certification that is required by law, but also through in-house training that really emphasizes safety and Ultimately, we are about quality and not quantity. We see high bourbon as not only the expression of a beautiful idea and a thriving business, but also as a platform to champion local artists and to support a living wage and a living wage and a revitalization of small farms and manufacturing. We spent the last five years learning every facet of our business, fundraising, developing architectural plans, getting sign-off from, I think, about fourteen New Mexico agencies, working with the planning department and the Upper Los Angeles Neighborhood Association so that we comply with all the regulations and the very tasteful design standards. So we're quite excited to be finally standing before you today. We are here as homegrown entrepreneurs to benefit our beloved community and to inspire and support others to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Commissioners, Jackson and I, with this time, would like to open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to speak for or against the two licenses that are for us today? If you do, please be sworn in by the clerk. Good morning. One minute. Clerk, please.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear in firm under oath and penalty of law for perjury of the testimony about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Darian Fernandes. So I come here today not as a council member, but as one of your constituents and in full support of this particular project, not just because of my familial connections to the Knights, but because of the potential that this project has to really revitalize the agriculture in our community. If we look at how much farmland has been left fallow and eventually loses the agricultural tax valuation and forces legacy landowners to sell and move away, that changes the landscape that we all appreciate. When we come out of the gorge and we see that willow tree, over the last decade, we've lost twenty percent of the legacy population in this community. Why? Because people sense that there isn't an opportunity. Yet, we literally have an opportunity that can be grown in our backyard with this project. Christie and Oliver mentioned that they are homegrown entrepreneurs, not just because they are rooted here, but because they are helping to sow the seeds of the agricultural revitalization of this area. Imagine being able to tell someone that they can keep their land in production, that they can grow a product that can then go into a value-added manufacturing facility and be turned into something that can be exported out of the community and have that money come back in at a living wage. We see it successfully with other brands like Taos Mountain Energy Bars, Vapor Gan Cosmetics, private label Select. Approving this project creates not just jobs in restaurant, not just jobs in hospitality, really jobs in manufacturing. It helps us diversify our base. Just yesterday, it was t-shirt weather. This morning, it was t-shirt weather. We can't rely on weather-specific industries anymore. We need to look at other opportunities that are available to us. And High Desert Spirits, one of those opportunities. So as your constituent, I ask you all to please vote yes, support this project, support our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to take this opportunity, if anyone has any questions, I'd like to ask us about it, because we'd be happy to answer.
As part of the public hearing, if they did, but hearing on the scene, at this time, I will close the public hearing portion of this application process. Mr. Correa, would you like to inform the commissioner anything before I go to commission questions?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would just like to reiterate again that they have followed all the applicable standards for the approval of the special use permit through the Taos County Planning Commission. And again, I would just like to reiterate that they do have the full support of the Upper Los Angeles Neighborhood Association for this project. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay, Commissioner Romano.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. There are two application numbers, if you could explain that?
The reason why there are two applications is because our tasting room is a separate building from our manufacturing facility. The federal government tends to like that better, but the state says that one liquor license can only cover a contiguous space, so we had to use one of our off-site licenses to cover that space. They allowed us to move them both forward at the same time.
Are they, among the others, that they're both in the same property?
Yes.
And the property, is it surrounded by residential? Is it a commercial, like a commercial?
The zone is a zone commercial. There are some residences sort of behind and to the southwest of Gabi Llan.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Black.
Thank you, Chairman. So without approving the project today, that's something that might come later under a special use permit, our job today is liquor license application and I ask our council to remind us of the limits of our discretion today.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I wish you'd like to warn, while reading, the staff is not immune on the approval of any other items with regards to this particular problem.
So waiting to be corrected then.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blackenhorn, this project was already approved through Taos County's, Taos County Planning Commission and that was approved on December 14th, 2016. So at this point, what the applicants are doing is they're basically following through on their approval and this is part of the approval process. They have to, as a condition of approval of the special use permit that they have to go through, which is to get approval from the back. So at this point, we have already received a special use permit.
We're not approving the project. The project has been approved. It wasn't appealed and so we won't end up here again. I hadn't been where the appellate, the appeal process had already gone through. But it's not, we're not approving the project today. It's just the liquor license. And the project is already been approved. Congratulations. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, we only get to decide this on a couple very narrow issues and I just wanted our attorney to remind us of that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and to members of the public who aren't real familiar with this, it is, for better or worse, our liquor licensing and liquor laws are controlled by the state to an almost exclusive degree. Very narrow exception is what we're doing here today, which is ensuring that communities have the opportunity to see that they meet the community zoning requirements and a couple specific issues about distance from certain structures like schools and churches. So from what the planning department has said, we see that those, those specific issues have been met and they're very fractured issues. And someone was here earlier and it's just always a public issue about whether or not it's good to have another liquor establishment in a particular neighborhood and the community simply can't weigh in on that. If we don't have that policymaking ability to decide that or not, it's up to the state. So that is the limit of your authorities, looking at the zoning issues.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner, hold your motion, because I already recognized Commissioner O'Donnell and then I had a comment as well and then we'll chime back in with you.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we met the notice requirements. The alcohol and gaming sent a letter December 15th saying forty-five days after receipt of the notice. Have we met the forty-day requirement? It seems like it's over that forty-five day requirement. I just want to make sure, are we talking about forty-five business days or forty-five calendar days? And if we haven't met that requirement, did we ask for an extension of wait?
Randy, is it from the time we received it, which was December 27th? That's the timestamp there?
I didn't look, I didn't look to see, I didn't review that issue prior to the meeting. I didn't see it as being an issue, but typically it's going to be within, under an issue like that, forty-five days within our receipt of it occurring, because that's the only thing within our control.
Because we only know when we get it, so forty-five days from when we receive it.
Okay, so we're in the forty-five days. And if I could just ask a couple quick questions. Could you talk a little bit more about growers? Do you have contracts? Who's going to grow the, what is it, rye?
Oh, weed barn and weed and rye, potentially other grains as well. As you guys likely know, a lot of the land in Taos County is out of production, but we have been speaking with the Alianza de Ecocultura about their work and we're aware also of the brewery's work with Farmers Equesta. There are USDA grants available to help jumpstart this kind of industry again. It's definitely going to take a lot of cooperation. We would just be one buyer, hopefully, out of many and hopefully a great organization like the Alianza can provide, you know, equipment that can go around to all the little farmers and collect things into one place. That kind of hub is definitely needed, but I think to give farmers that assurance, we will buy your product at this price, is the first thing they need to invest in their land again.
And then, what's your volume of exporting out? Do you have an estimated projection?
About thirty-six thousand cases in each case. So there's seven, there's seven hundred fifty milliliters for a bottle and twelve bottles per case.
And then, how much will you be using a lot of water for this production? Do you have a deep enough well and do you have an estimate of what, how much water are you going to use?
We estimate about two acre feet. And in terms of the water, that was definitely, you know, a big, a big piece of our project. We have a contract to buy water from a commercial well at the Quell Ridge and there are also plans for oil product water and sanitation to bring a line all the way up to the neighborhood. I can't speak exactly to that because that's not our project, but I, we are aware that that's how it works.
Two acre feet of you?
Yes.
And I was looking at this commercial property lease, which is curious because, could you explain that? Because you're paying yourself or your other company the money for the lease? I'm just a little confused of how, why this is in here and what this means.
Sure. It is a little confusing. We were advised by our accountant to set up a structure where the land and the building were as a separate holding company from the operating company, but they're all united by a parent mother company. But, you know, in order to check off all the boxes, one of those child companies had to lease it to the operating company.
And you actually have to pay that million dollars? What is that, million dollars over how many years or over a year or?
No, I, I think we had said it as a kind of a monthly fee.
Of nine thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And you pay that to yourself? This, that's where I just didn't understand.
It's really just an accounting thing where everything flows up to the mother company. But for example, the operating company would have to pay at least to the holding company in order to, because the holding company's been responsible for maintenance, property taxes, all of those things. But ultimately, it really all just evens out over time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just had a comment. I think this is a really, really good business plan that you've developed from, from everything to the local flavor throughout and this is great economic development. This is the kind of thing that everybody has been talking about, is having local locals come back and do something and get, you know, the export business going or something like that and low, low demand on the, on the streets and travel and other things, but yet it's bringing something in notoriety to Taos and I think this is a really good model in my opinion. So I thank you for your presentation today and apologize for your recent loss. I should have said that before. Mr. Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, Commissioners, I would entertain, I believe, Commissioner Blackenhorn wished to make it. Is Mark still on the line? Mark, did you have anything to add? We're having some kind of phone problem. It's just the weather. Sorry, call him on his phone.
Can you hear me now, Commissioner?
Yeah, there you are, okay. Do you have any comments or anything or do you want to go to the motion and process?
I'm excited and I'm proud that there's some local people taking a risk in the agriculture business and that there are people who still have, it's time to be represented and I do appreciate that there are hardships to weather about the problem that we have in our community as part of alcohol and drugs and bringing more alcohol to the community and knowing that it's going to be more of an export than it is going to be trying to have local people where they're going to try to do a lot of social thinking, but we're absolutely excited at keeping the farmers and keeping their memories back here. As Darian Fernandes spoke up earlier, I do think that that's a very important need to get back to our, to our history and our culture. So thank you very much for taking that step forward. I wish I would have, but I'll show you some talk later. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a closing comment from Mr. Adino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good morning, and I'm struck to members of the public. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a few words of guidance. There's actually two applications before you, so leave your appropriate, you have two separate motions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Black.
Thank you, Chairman. See, Oliver, your brother is my physical therapist. He's doing a great job. I do not believe that that disqualifies me of conflict of interest and so I rule in a motion for application 1071359 to approve that application.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve liquor license application 1071359. Any further discussion? Hearing ended, for color.
Commissioner Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Daigus.
Good.
Chairman Faber.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the second motion on application number 1076154, license application with detached taproom located at number seven Gabi Llan Drive, Mexico, requested by applicant Taos Desert Spirits LLC.
Okay, you hear the motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second to approve application 1076154 for the craft distillery liquor license application with detached taproom at 7 Gabi Llan Drive, Mexico, requested by Taos Desert Spirits LLC. Clerk Colwell.
Commissioner Romano.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Daigus.
Good.
Chairman Faber.
Yes, and as Commissioner Romano said, good luck. We wish you guys the best.
We wish you guys the best.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioners, next item on the agenda is consent agenda, but does everybody need a break, or what do you want to do? Keep going? I'll keep going. All right. Next item, thank you guys again for the time of being here. Next item is the consent agenda. I will read the items of the consent agenda to the question, because if you have a question on any item, we'll pull that, and that will be dealt with as the next business prior to moving on to the rest of the agenda. Item A is approval of DFA resolution number 18, which is a resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final budget to increase revenue and expenditures of Taos County EMS to account for a 2018 EMS scholarship from the Enchanted Circle EMS Association for EMT intermediate minors. Item B is approval of budget adjustment for Public Works 0204-1600. Item C is approval of budget adjustment for DWI intake fees 1227-1339. Item D is approval of budget adjustment for County Complex 3401-1716. Item E is approval of budget adjustment for E911 Central Communications 0207-0911. Item F is approval of budget adjustment for Juvenile Detention Center 0226-1710. Item G is approval of budget adjustment for Rio Fernando Fire District 0206-1558. Item H is approval of a budget adjustment for Foster Grandparent Senior Companion 2219-0117 and 0118. Item I is approval of the work for RFP 2018-05 Legal, Professional Legal Services for Taos County. Item J, approval of off-stake travel on actual reimbursement for Michael Cordova, Fire Chief, Juan Carlos Gonzalez, Leslie Mays, Mariah Sanchez, and Peter Sanchez to attend the Company Officer Academy Training and Preparedness on May 1st through 3rd, 2018 in Northland, Colorado. Item K is approval of the purchase of computer equipment, printers, scanners, server with capital appropriations 82519, Taos County Northern National Bank Grant, SAKIS RFP money. That is the consent agenda presented to you, Commissioners. I entertain a motion, or if you ask for an item, we'll handle that separately.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, and a second. Clerk Cullor.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigos?
Good.
Chairman Faber?
Yes.
Okay, next item. Thank you, Commissioners, for that. Item 10 is resolutions and ordinances. Item A is approval of resolution 2018-8, the resolution establishing Taos County All-Hazards Emergency Operations Plan, the EOP Plan as it's commonly called. This will be presented today by our Deputy OEM Coordinator, Mr. Mark Ortega. Morning, Mark. What's that stuff coming out there?
It's good stuff. Good morning, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Present the reception operating plan for the county. That's something that I got tasked with as soon as I got here. Myself and Bobby have worked on it for almost a year now. It's basically a plan for all emergency operations. It's basically our playbook or how we're going to operate during emergency operation plan during emergencies. It sets up our emergency operations center or chain of command or incident command structure, and basically lays out what each department, the department head is responsible for and what they're going to do in certain emergencies. Of course, we're not, it's not, we're kind of give or some as emergencies happen. It was a plan that was written, one of the first ones, we revised it, read through it, updated it, updated all the contact information. We got it to New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management. They took their time and read over it, made some slight changes, brought it back. We redid one of the changes, went through the whole document again, and we're here for adoption. Sure, it's required for a lot of the funding when an emergency happens, for to get federal funding, but also for a lot of the grants, which my position is to fund some of it in order to keep on, to keep compliant on the grant. And I'm sure, with the use of all our exercises, upcoming exercises, I'm sure as we exercise the emergency operating plan, there are going to be changes within the times. It's dealt with as far as updating the year, and at that time, we'll change the way we do as we consume what exercises.
That's one thing I wanted to stress when we first did this, I don't know how many years ago. This is a necessary requirement for a lot of grants that the county does ask for. All of the changes have been made in the red. It has been through state review, Mikey and Giver Blessing, every, through department review. I think it's a good plan. Thank you, Mark, for your hard work. Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I do have a series of questions and a couple add-ons to this plan. But first, I want to apologize to Mr. Patton. I did ask him to stay because I wanted him to respond to page 228 of the document, and I had given him a copy of the section I was referring to, the various bullet, bullet points, and I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, if it would be all right if Mr. Patton came up and gave his response, because I know he'd probably like to get that.
Page 228, I was just reading those.
Yes.
Where it's under Holy Cross Hospital?
Yes, and he has the bullet points. I just like his response.
Mr. Patton, if you're comfortable, it's up to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for providing the document. As I've reviewed it, we are very supportive of all of the things that have been assigned to us. We've been happy for the involvement that the county has had as we've worked on our own internal emergency plans, and so everything that's listed here is something that we're prepared to take that responsibility for.
Could you maybe highlight a few of those points?
Sure, so the emergency notification, that's a process that we have so that when there's an incident, we can get in touch with appropriate people. We have our own internal standard operating procedures and have been doing a number of tabletops to become comfortable with those. Rolled out a new radio system for better communication. Risk Manager Renee Sando recently attended the incident command training that took place here, so that she is the leader of our program to be there to care. And then the last one, coordinating to care for Andrew during match schedules, our ER will be well prepared to help with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just continue. Do we have in place, Mr. Ortega, thank you for this document, a reverse E911?
Not at the time, but we're working on a notification system. We, myself and Bobby have actually set in, in chapel of people.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we're also, I know Mr. Luciano's been working in collaboration with Mr. Medina to try and tie it into our new website. So we've been looking at a couple of those notification systems so that they would be, I guess, synchronized with our website so that we can also get that up.
Do you have any idea what that reverse E911 would cost?
I, is it fully available yet? I, I don't think, I know it's been talked about, there's some people that have developed small models that you can get through your cell phone, but I don't know that the capabilities are here yet for that, but can you look into that, Mike?
I think there's other programs now that do a little better than the vintage work reverse E911, because I'll go to your cell phones, emails, Facebook, and a bunch of Twitter and all those different accounts, along with just everyone's cell phone that's in the area at the time.
Well, I'm lying, I can tell you that now.
So these notification systems are, are kind of overpassed the E911 reverse E911 from what I understand.
So maybe in August, you might want to change the language where you mentioned E911, maybe, you know, maybe clarify it.
Yes.
Figures four and five were missing from the document. That's on page 241, road evacuation routes and something to do with the hospital. Will you be adding those documents, because they were missing?
Ah, yes, go back to them.
Okay, that was on, starting on page 241, figures four and five were not in the document.
That's the evacuation, robbing?
Yeah, yeah, and the hospital, to do with the hospital, I believe. I did have a question about page, it's 151 in the document, where it says that the chair will decide whether there's an emergency disaster. I'm just wondering if it should read instead of the Taos County Commissioner. And that's on page 124.
What, what? So in order to do it by the commission, we would have to notice a public meeting, and then quickest would be 24 hours so that we could convene to have a vote. So you're, if there's an emergency and we need a decision prior to the 24 hours. Everything would just have to be on hold for 24 hours from the time that we properly notice.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have thoughts from Mr.?
Ali.
Yeah. What's the best way to deal with that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there's no easy way. I had the unfortunate responsibility, I was acting county manager in Los Alamos, and in, under our emergency management plan, it fell to the county administrator for, to declare an emergency when there was an inability to get something before the commission, and that's what happened in the Los Contras fire, we had to do that. And it was really awkward because I didn't want to do it, but there was literally not a time to get to the commission for a vote prior to that time. So, I mean, it is, you have to have something in place to allow for that situation. So you're essentially delegating your authority for that one narrow thing, and what happens was, I was following the recommendation of the fire chief and the police chief, and that's basically what would happen to the chair in this instance. These folks say, "The whole world's going to crash down unless you do this right now." And so therefore, you need to have that ability to act that quickly in those circumstances.
Okay, that answers that question. Do you have a generator for the Yano Kaido Center? It's listed as the Operations Command Center, and do you plan to have a generator?
We don't at this time, but we've begun getting practices and seeing where we can get funding for that, to make the emergency operations there fully functional.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we hope that we can apply for some federal funds to help us in the cost of that. In our research, it looks like we would need a generator similar to what we have here at the complex, but a little smaller scale, so it would be a pretty expensive purchase.
And then, you talked a great things about an information form to take in volunteers, Is there any way to get a list ahead of time? Because it sounds like if there's chaos, or is that just standard operating procedure? Do you have a copy? I, I guess the information form is included in the document, but it says that we provide the volunteer questions and the ID cards. So my question was, I realize there may be volunteers coming forth and you need to vet them, but is that something you can already have in place ahead of time to kind of stop any kind of potential chaos with people coming in wanting to volunteer? I don't know, I just wanted you to speak about that.
But that's definitely something we, we try and do, we work with Red Cross, and they try to handle a lot of the volunteer work that happens, and the reason we really want to watch volunteers is because we don't want them to just show up to help and then they're going and not doing, not knowing what they're doing, they just kind of show up and freelance and add to the problem rather than that. So we need a system where we can get people in and batched and assign them to stuff. We definitely can look at ways to get lists beforehand, but typically we can't see volunteers until the world's on fire and they're here to volunteer, and they're really sure to volunteer.
Okay, it was just kind of unclear who is responsible. It sounds like we are for the volunteer questionnaire and the ID cards, so I don't know, I was just curious about that. And then if we could, the only amendment I would make is on page 227 where you list the general health clinics that we at El Centro, they were left out. So that would be my only add-on, and if you could, on page 315, if you could spell my name with a capital D.
Okay.
So, I mean, those, other than that, it's a great document. So, thank you for answering my questions, and I guess it's in order, Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion? Do I need to make a motion to, for the add-on for El Centro included in this resi?
Because it's a resolution and not an ordinance, I believe that you can just direct staff to make the change as discussed. So, part of the mo, just going to put it here, motion, just as a reminder, how about that?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I see the move. We approve resolution 2018-8, a resolution establishing the Taos County All-Hazards Emergency Operations Plan with the amendment on page 227 to add El Centro and on page 315 to capitalize the D in my name.
Good.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second to approve resolution 2018-8 establishing the Taos County All-Hazards EOP with the direction of, with the addition of El Centro and a special change. Clerk Cullor.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geigos?
Good.
Chairman Faber?
Yes.
Okay, next item. Thank you, Commissioners, for that. Item 12, county managers report that matters. Item A is discussion and decision regarding a change of meeting dates for March. Watch your proposal, Mr. Pardo.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you may remember, March 6th is election day, and two of our Commissioners, including myself, will be out of town at the NICO conference in Washington, DC. So I'd like to propose a move to, a moving of the meeting to the following Tuesday, which would be March 13th. If there's any requests, I would-
We would not have a forum that day because I've been selected to be the presiding judge for that election, and so we wouldn't have a forum, so.
So March 13th?
Yes.
That's my proposal, there's no objections.
And do we have to canvass those votes or not?
Oh, no.
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 Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to ask for the board to approve moving the March 6th meeting to March 13th.
Does it mean a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, because we're changing over the meeting.
Okay, move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need to look at, I'm sorry, we do have a motion by Commissioner O'Donnell to change the regular meeting day from March 13th? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, do we need to, so that's to put two meetings close together either way we do it.
What is, what is the next one after that?
It would be March 20th.
So it'd be the following week, and then we'd be off until the 3rd of April. Okay, do we need to, so that's to put two meetings close together either way we do it.
What is, what is the next one after that?
It would be March 20th.
So it'd be the following week and then we'd be off until the 3rd of April.
So are you going to keep the 20th?
We can discuss that now at this time as well. I'm open to a change in... That's the will of the board. We can move the 20th meeting to the 27th. And just for the month of March, we would be 30th.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will amend my motion so that those meeting days are on the 13th. Change to the 13th and then to the 27th of March as well.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll still have back-to-back meetings then from the March 27th through the April 3rd.
She goes one meeting.
So the proposal, our deputy county managers, perhaps one meeting for the month of March. We could maybe just keep it on the 20th and cancel the meeting of the 6th. Or do the 13th and cancel the meeting of the 20th. And we'll have one meeting smack back in the middle of the month. Of course, if we have any other needs, we can always call a special mission meeting.
Let's, would you like to...
I think it's good for us to...
So your motion is to move the meetings to 13th to 27th? And...
Second.
Okay, we have a second to the amended motion for moving the meetings to March 13th to 27th. Further discussion, Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
I think he went offline.
Chairman Babri.
Yes.
May I, Mr. Chairman, ask the county clerk what our filing date is for Taus County?
It's March 13th.
So it's that same day?
Yes.
He'll be here?
Yeah.
Did you hear any meetings?
Isn't that what it is? Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding Taus County burn bans proposed by Bobby Lucero.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, our emergency manager, our manager director, Bobby Lucero, is proposing that Taus County move forward with a burn ban. There's a letter attached to the packet. I just wanted to inform the board, give you the information and get any input at this time from the board. As we are fortunate to have a little moisture this morning, that's about as much as we've had in many months. So if the ban is, it's necessary. I think it's important for us to be ahead of it. I appreciate our emergency manager and our fire chief's also here to field any questions or concerns. But I do think it's prudent that we're ahead of any concerns that they have. And so that we're protecting our county.
The argument that we got, whenever we brought these this early in the season, which, you know, certainly is warranted. We've yet to give the residents a chance to clean things. So, um... That is a complaint. This is, there's some places that the only way they're going to clear the, or mitigate the hazard is by fire. So as long, if we do a burn ban, there still needs to be some avenue where certain burns can happen because it's, if we don't, then we're creating more of a fire hazard. So we're not voting on this today, but it will come back at the next meeting if it's a pleasure of the commission. But if you can incorporate something like that, Mikey, I'd really appreciate that because we kind of shot ourselves in the foot back in the eight, late 80s by clapping it all off. And then in May, we had some messes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just conject a little bit. Do a little bit of farming myself. In order to have cash before animals get greasy, we do need to burn, so...
With the green grass. And you've got to have it in the asepsis. A lot of the asepsis is just overgrown dead grass. That's the only means you can give it.
So I got my burn permit yesterday.
Thanks.
I'll get the fire department on alert.
Thank you.
Sheriff, Commissioners, good morning. I want to pass out a fire danger analysis. It was done on February 3rd. It was this last Saturday. I agree with you. We can't be going up and down with the restrictions. The other thing is we saw contractors that are burning up in higher elevations that this ban would have them stop. And we can't have them stop right now because if that happens and those flash piles stay high in the sapto and we have some up in the canyon. If they stay dry and it'll get burned, if there is a fire in those places, it's going to make it worse. So I still think we maybe have another two, three weeks probably to maybe do the ban. I want, me and Bobby wanted to, just inform you that we are going to have a dry season and it's higher than normal this year. But if I can pass this out, just so you can look at it right now. It's anywhere from 28 points or less. We won't go into any restrictions. And then we'll have a process if we do restrictions and burn bans. So if you want to look at this, I'll hand it out and I'll take any other questions here.
And the models that you're using, just so the public knows what you're basing your decision on, is Haynes?
Haynes, and it's out of Swiss, Southwest Coordination Center. And also, this analysis is for Taus County and the Enchanted Circle, which is the west side of Colfax County as well, which is in the burn ban. The entire Colfax County is, but mostly because of the east side of Colfax County, which is grasslands. And Mono County also is in a burn ban, but because of the grasslands. We really don't have grasslands. Lake County also, there's those three burn bans and Village of Rage Fire. But any where else, we're just not having a ban since it's the year of this Forest Service surveillance.
Okay.
So I'm going to just pass this out. And I can update you with this on the on-due later on.
And this affects Pickle East or Taus Pueblo, go one. And then conditions can be different at 8,000 feet as compared to 7,000 feet. They're dramatically different by the different indices that he has to his available tone. That's why you still may see some prescribed burns going on during this on federal land because that's their only opportunity to get that to go because their conditions are different. So there's no federal land, no sovereign land.
So if you look at the report, we're at the bottom, it's on point criteria. So we're at 23 points. 28 or less is a normal wildfire response for Enchanted Circle, which includes Taus County, Village Questa, the Enchanted Circle Association. If we go to 28 to 32 points, we institute the high-risk response level, which is added apparatus to aid in wildfires. If it goes greater than 32 points, that's when we start doing our restrictions. But with the weather, it was snowing up of 10 minutes ago and now it's down to nothing. And so I'm going to say that for this next week, it's probably going to stay at 23, if not drop a little bit. But give it two or three more weeks and it's probably going to go into that mid-range. So it's going to vary, but I can give you an actual, these reports on a weekly basis from here on out and see where we are. I still want to also ask Public, or I'm sorry, yeah, Public Works, if they can, on our county own roads, kind of start cutting down the weeds. If they can, if they're not too busy to mitigate that fire hazard. The state did it in Questa. They actually went to dirt. That way, in case anything gets thrown out of a vehicle, it just stays on the dirt. So I'm going to ask that, talk to Ron One and see if we can do that. If they're not too busy, start mitigating those hazards now. That way, we don't have to worry about it in the interim.
Since it's something that we may be based on a vote, you want to go ahead and send email these out as you provide them to staff or ask staff to?
So at the road department, Mr. Chairman, instead of sweeping snow, they're going to be...
Cutting weeds.
Cutting dirt.
Yeah.
Can I just be clear that you do not favor giving exemptions to agricultural burning?
Well, we would. Yeah, I favor that. But right now, I think right now, we can still leave it open burning right now. And in the case of the ditch burning, we've done it in Questa for years where there's a burn ban, but we issued a special permit for burning of ditches and stuff like that, if need be. It'd be on a case-to-case basis, depending, you know, what Bobby also wants to do. He can sit down and talk about it. Really, the ball's in his court. He does take care of the burn permits. That's more of a question for him, but I think he'd be okay if we did it case-to-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks. Tell Bobby thanks.
You got it.
Okay, and the next thing is various items affecting Taus County. Mr. Corbald.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell would ask for you to do an update on the Health Council. I'm doing a little looking into it, investigating. It does look like a bylaws up through the cracks during our turnover in attorneys. So I talked to Mr. Arno. We're going to get those to him. We're going to fast-track those and try and get that back on forward progress. And I do apologize for that. So that's a quick update on the Health Council. We'll come back hopefully within the next month or so with updated bylaws and take them to the council and keep that moving. The next item, IGC. On January 25th, we did have our meeting. Commissioner O'Donnell was present and representing the board. Basically, we talked about the viability of the IGC. And I think the one thing we definitely agreed upon was the importance of that working group and solidifying our long-term goals, as well as kind of identifying and moving forward on short-term goals. So what I took out of that meeting, long-term goals, is basically working on a community development quarter, which is a sub-court of our New Mexico Economic Development District. So it gives us kind of the best of both worlds of trying to get our own autonomy for our Enchanted Circle, but also still falling under the umbrella of the Economic Development District for things like funding and technical assistance and expertise. So that's our long-term goal. Short-term, we decided we need to start looking at a JPA with a mission statement and just solidifying the relationship of the members of the IGC. There is discussion that there once upon a time was bylaws in place. We can't find that. It doesn't seem like any of the members from way back have been able to identify the original bylaws in the original articles of, I guess, incorporation and reforming that. So that's basically where we're at. We do appreciate the collaborative effort, so.
Commissioner Blankenhorst.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So Taus County, Taus County, the TCDC, already is a CTC. They already have that designation. I think there's three in the state. We already have one here in Taus. That's something that's a consideration to try and join with them. Utilize theirs or go through the effort of getting another. Just saying that we do have one in Taus County.
Okay. There was discussion about including them, of course, as participating members. We decided to start with the original members and kind of start the JPA and solidify our relationship as we first before we really pursue that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll take that back the next minute. A quick legislative update. All our capital outlay requests were turned in by the deadline of last Friday. We'll see what comes out for this county. It was still a tight year, even with new money and some capital outlay. The senator and representative both indicated that there was far more requests than there was money to hand out as always. And so they were certainly going to take all of our considerations into their decisions. But we don't know yet what we've been allocated. So we'll hopefully find that out within the next day or two. House Bill 2 was passed on the House side, moved over to the Senate. Some concern over at the Senate side was that it was overfunded. So by the time I got to the Senate with all the amendments that had been requested from different agencies, different groups, those amendments were quite likely... Sapo, I thought was the best part of House Bill 2, which was $80 million for roads. So we'll see if there's $80 million after all of the negotiation when it gets out of the Senate. Couple of weeks ago, the GeoBond bill had $49 million included for roads. That has been stripped out. The higher education lobbying backup had gotten their hands on that, essentially took it back to the original funding levels they had once upon a time. So that was an opportunity. It was a chance that we're taking. Senator understood the needs for local governments and he tried. But we just didn't get that into the GeoBond. So our best hope is the $80 million in House Bill 2 for local government road fund projects. And moving on to the last topic for the day, top of the world updates. We hadn't intended to have that here today. Mr. Rayal, however, was still gathering information as of late Friday afternoon. I'll let Mr. Arno add to that if he has any other details. But essentially, we're glad for February 20th, that our date to have an update on top of the world. We just feel like we're having some problems getting all of the prior documentation and everything from our previous attorneys. So once we gather everything, we can really allow our new council to really get a good feeling.
And Commissioners, I just wanted to assure you that the court deadlines, the first one coming up is on a motion to dismiss by Alki Cuervo that's heard on March 2nd. So we're not behind the law for any of it. We will get you that out there.
That's all I have. At this time, if you have any questions, the board.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is Commissioners' Reports on Matters. First thing is, at the last investment committee meeting, it was noted that by our treasurer, that she would like to have an alternate. We actually don't have a position on this committee. But at her request, she'd like to have one of the board finance members at her meetings to hear where their investments and their different ideas are going. So it did ask for the chair to be there. So what we need is anyone that, they meet once a month. Takes about 40 minutes, meet upstairs. Anybody interested in being the alternate for the investment committee? Tommy?
Sure.
We're pointing at you.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
So since it's not a formal position by the ordinance, we don't have to do that. But we just need to know what it's, so Susan knows to include in the email. So I'll inform Susan that we'll be Commissioner Blankenhorst. Any business to be considered a future meeting, Commissioners? Commissioner, announcement, I have two. I have, I have been approached by St. Ven, St. Vincent's to meet with me. I told him that it was the wishes of the, uh... The commission that we not meet with any providers or anything like that that may contact us. They have set up a meeting tentative for 9:00 in the morning. I told him that I would not be with them until I had blessing of my fellow commissioners. So that's the first item that I have. I don't know what it's about. I had engaged in conversation with them as instructed and agreed upon by the board. So you know as much as I do, other than it's in the Senate finance. No, I, I, that's where I was when they walked into me. So I don't even know where the meeting is. It's at night. So, okay, talk to them and see what... I think they're just going to know what's going on. Okay, so I plan on leaving Taus around 6:30. The other thing I had is I spoke to Melissa Larson yesterday. And she'd like to resurrect the idea of a possibility of having the community flea market kind of thing here in our parking lot, or at least look at some possibilities of different places. She's going to meet with Nelson and work out some details of concerns of having anything on that side on the weekends because that needs to stay open for emergency traffic. She's aware of that. I just want to let you guys know that she's, she's brought it up. She wants to at least try it once to see if, where it goes from there. So you'll be hearing some more stuff about it as she meets with different county departments to try to work something out. Her idea is like over in this part of the, it's not a very big venture. And she's willing to share part of the proceeds from the different vendor... I think we'd call them vendors. The people that have stuff and sell their goods that day. So they've offered to do that. So there's your anti-donation and stuff. If it would meet that, that would certainly be somebody above my pay grade, Randy. And to try to figure it out. She made a good argument that we should at least try it once. I, if we can work out all the logistics and everything to give it a whirl, maybe we can look at it. And we've got places over here. She doesn't really want to go in the back, but would accept anything just to try to get it, the test going. So just to let you guys know, that's why we don't have to make any decisions or anything. Or can Mr....
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Ms. Larson and I had ongoing conversations. We had gotten very close to an agreement to use the back lot. But when I never know we intended to build the senior building, she backed down and do not want to use the back lot. So we have come real close. The concerns for the front are the same as they always have been. We can definitely look at the size of it. However, it's, it wouldn't allow for bigger markets. So it would kind of be unfortunate to not allow everybody that wants to be able to use that space to use it and only allow this small group to use it because they're a smaller market. So we are, we can continue the conversation and continue to look at our options. So we are, we can continue at the conversation and continue to look at our options.
The other consideration is the blue bus does come through here, so until that bus stop gets moved, it's going to be kind of unsafe for part of it, unless we pick another spot, the little area over here or something like that, so. We're going to look at this stuff, she's going to call me again today and let her know that we talked about it, and for her to go ahead and set up her meetings if that's what people want. All right. Anybody have any other announcements? Hearing none, moving on to item 14. House County Board of Commissioners making meeting in closed session, the item A is a discussion regarding the Taos Health Systems lease, this is a discussion matter that may also be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption, 10-15-1H8, which allows for the discussion of purchase, acquisition, disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. Mr. Audio, is it your recommendation that we go into executive session on the so-mentioned item 14?
Mr. Chair, it is, I hope that it's going to be brief today, but I guess it is best to meet in closed session.
Okay, does anyone understand the motion? Commissioners?
So move.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to go into closed session to discuss Taos Health Systems Inc. lease, and this is available under Open Meetings Act 10-15-1H8, to discuss purchase or acquisition of disposal of real property or water by the public body. Clerk Caldero.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Vak.
Yes. Motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
Clerk Caldero.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
I love her.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Audio, could you?
This is going on.
Oh. We can hear this. Mr. Audio, could you give a report as to what was discussed in closed session?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, in closed session, we discussed only the issue that was publicly noticed on the exception of the Open Meetings Act, we're discussing a lease with the hospital, and there were no actions taken in a closed session.
Commissioners, you heard the report, I have a motion to accept.
So move.
Second. Motion, a second, to accept Mr. Audio's report as to business that was discussed in closed session. Clerk Caldero.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item 15.
Motion to adjourn, Chairman, second.
Motion, a second, I'll favor say aye. Thank you all.